Good afternoon. Thank you for joining us today at Albany City Council Work Session, Monday, February tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. I now call the meetings order. Would you please, the roll call please start?
Counselor Thompson? Counselor Montague?
Here.
Counselor McLeod?
Present.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Counselor McGee? Counselor Newton Azar? Mayor Johnson?
Here. Counselor Newton Azar mentioned that she'd be joining online. Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is Business from the Public. Business from the Public is a time for Albany residents to speak, speak and for counselors to listen. The council won't discuss topics or make decisions during the Business from the Public, but will take comments or requests into advisement. Speakers are limited to three minutes and must follow the council rules and observe the same standards of decorum. If unable to do so, they will be asked to step down and take a seat in the audience for the rest of the meeting. When arriving at the microphone, please give your name and state whether or not you live in the city of Albany. Thank you. Go inside up. First on tonight's list, David Barron.
Mayor Johnson and City Council, thanks for having me. Has my time started?
Yes.
All right. My name is David Barron. I am not a resident of Albany, although I do spend a lot of time here. I probably should invest in a condo or something here. I live in Benton County in Blodgett, which is just outside of Philomath. I live there with my wife and four kids. We live on a small farm. And I've been a firefighter for twenty-six years. The reason I'm here is to speak about my organization called Friend. And this calendar here is for Mayor Johnson. I'll share this with you at the end. We are a five oh one C three nonprofit that our goal is to get thirteen to nineteen-year-old boys and girls to consider firefighting as a career, specifically those who haven't traditionally considered firefighting a career. I've been a lieutenant for over twenty-one years in the fire department, and it's just been my desire and hope to get more people and interested in the fire service, specifically those who haven't considered firefighting as a career. My opportunity today, I really want to express that we're going to try and put a STEM camp here in Lynn County, specifically in Tangent Fire and Rescue. I would love to do it at the city of Albany, but currently you guys don't have a training ground. So that's why Tangent Fire and Rescue was chosen. This camp will be for thirty boys and girls, again between ages of thirteen and nineteen, and it'll be a two-day camp where they'll receive their CPR first aid certification on day one, and then the second day will be skill stations, firefighter skill stations such as the jaws of life, ventilation, and taking a hydrant, et cetera. So thanks for allowing me to come here and share that with you. If you have any questions over this next fifty seconds, I'll be happy to answer them for you.
Yeah, we don't go back and forth in this one.
Okay, that's all I have for you. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it and look forward to talking to you soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda, State of the Court presentation. Judge Myers and Director Jaeger, verbal presentation only.
Good evening. Tonight, we have Judge Meyer September Ridgway, who is our court supervisor, is also here. I am going to let September take my spot and be available for questions if anybody has them later.
Thank you. Thank you, Director.
All right. Good afternoon, evening. I'm Judge Meyer, and I think most of you know me, although I know we have a new counselor here tonight, so it's nice to see some new faces, too. I haven't done a State of the Courts yet, so I'm giving you my first one. And if you have questions, I'm sure there'll be time at the end, I hope, for any questions or something that I might have missed that you were hoping to hear about with the municipal court. So I started as the judge of the municipal court in November, the first of November of two thousand and twenty-three. So it's been just over a year now since I've been a municipal court judge. And I want to give you some things that I've seen over the past year, some big changes that we've made in the court. And I guess maybe it would be best for me to give you all my information, or do you want me to stop periodically for questions, Mayor? Do you have a preference?
If the councils have questions, they'll let me know.
Okay, perfect. Okay. So we'll start with some of the big changes over the last year. And one of those is, and it might not seem like a big thing to you, but it was big for us, we started electronically filing all of our abstracts with the DMV. So when I first started as the judge, what we would have to do is we would have two different abstracts, and that's the judgment form that's on the back of the citation, where we would have to duplicate them. And then we would actually mail in the citation abstract to the DMV, and then the DMV would process that mailed-in piece of paper for each traffic violation that we adjudicated. So as you can imagine, that was cumbersome. And so in the last, pretty soon after I started, we started, we switched over to the electronic submission of those abstracts, which saves a lot of time and a lot of paper as well. And those DMV, the information that goes to the DMV gets there a lot faster, too, so the DMV appreciates it. So it might sound like a small thing to you, but it was huge for us, and it was a great change that's been made over the last year. The second thing and the biggest thing, yeah, was there a question? Yeah, sorry.
So on that, as somebody who has previously been in the continuous improvement, did you get a chance to estimate, or are you kind of like trying to estimate right now that time savings that you'll have just from getting rid of all that paper?
Wow, that's a good question. I didn't know.
That's a good question. I don't know if we really have a way to measure that, but.
It's hard, I know, yeah, because you can kind of imagine how much time it took you before and how much time over the years.
Right. So I would fill out one, like I would have it like on my desk or on the bench, I would have the written abstract that I would fill out, and then it would go to a clerk, and then the clerk would duplicate it, and that duplicate would be mailed to the DMV. So that's a lot of time. Yeah.
Okay. Amazing. Thank you.
Yeah, so awesome. So.
Counselor Smith has.
Yeah.
In practical terms, as a driver, this probably means that if you are suspended or have some other bad act reported on your license now, the DMV knows about it faster, therefore law enforcement knows about it faster.
That's also true, yes.
Thank you.
Yes. So the second big change, and this is huge and it's been incredible, is we went paperless in the court, which, when I first started, I would go onto the bench and there would just be piles of files, and we would just call them one at a time, and I would fill them out physically with a pen, the judgment forms, and then they would go to a clerk, and then the clerk would continue on with the file. So now, instead of having piles of files on my bench, I have a computer. And it's amazing. It's been fantastic. And not only does that computer allow me on the bench to adjudicate and enter things that are happening in court, and the court clerks are mainly doing that while we're in court, but it allows me to see all those things in such an easy and organized way. By date, I can click on things and open them up and see when payments have been made, or when a judgment was signed, or when a suspension was lifted. It's all on the computer, and it's life-changing. And I can't take credit for any of these things, just as a side note, this is September, and Jen, and Jalisa, and April, and Cheryl, and they do all of these amazing things. And not only have we gone paperless, so January, I think, is when we started, January two thousand and twenty-four, but they have gone through now and scanned in all of the files, and so everything's paperless now. So we started in January just not creating any new paper files, but in this year window, they've also scanned in all of the files, the old files, too. So if you've seen the court office a year ago and see it now, you'll see we're missing a lot of filing cabinets and like lots of paper. It's all gone, and it's been fantastic. So no, no, no thanks to me. It was not me who did it. It was September and her awesome team, and I just get a benefit by it, and it's been great. So any questions about how our paperless system works or those changes that were made?
Sounds good to me. Counselors? Counselor Newton Azar, do you have any questions?
Nope, I'm good. Well, I was wondering, do you know how much money maybe we would save by not printing paper?
Oh, just like paper-wise? I don't know. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm wondering if that was like a line item in our budget, if we're using so much paper, if maybe we're saving a little more money in the courts.
We've got to be saving money. I don't know how much, but for sure, yeah.
I would have to look more into it, but I'm sure we're saving a lot.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so any other questions about those? Those are kind of the big changes. I guess the other big change is there was a new judge all year, so I can't speak to that, but hopefully it's been good. I want to make sure that I'm highlighting and just thanking the partnerships that we have that I so appreciate, and I know the staff in the court does as well. We're so grateful for Chief Hardenden and Captain Drum and Captain Pierce and all of the people at the Albany Police Department. I've been so impressed over the last year. They're professional, they're timely, they're efficient, they care. You can tell they really care about the city. They come into court prepared for their trials and really wanting to make positive changes in our community, and I really appreciate that. We appreciate Mr. Kidd, Sean and his team, and Laura, who's the brains behind it all, I think. Just kidding, Sean, you're great. But we're grateful for Sean and Laura and his whole office and the great work that they do and the resource they are to the court. They're fantastic. Our court-appointed attorney, we do have a court-appointed attorney that we appoint for defendants, Eric Muller, and he's been, he's been great, too. We're so appreciative of those individuals that come in, and we also have a victim services advocate from APD named Tara Williams, and I'm going to talk about her specifically later, but she's really special to us. So as far as court revenue, so as a side note, the municipal court and any local court, that's not the purpose of it, and it can't be. So I don't think in the back of my mind about court revenues when we're handling court, but I do have some numbers for you because it probably interests the city council about what revenue comes in, and you likely, when you're looking at the budget, see the court revenue. Just, I have the two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four revenue numbers, just the total court revenue. And then, as you know, anytime, well, there's a state statute that says the first fifty dollars of any fine that we collect per case goes to the state. And so we'll have a total court revenue, but then some of those funds do go to the state of Oregon by statute. So between two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four, we did have an increase of eighty-four thousand dollars about in total court revenue, and it was an increase of just under sixty-four thousand of revenue that came into the city. So we did have an increase between the years two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four of our court revenue. Our filings stayed about the same. We had a few fewer traffic violations filed and a few more crimes filed, but not any numbers to be just like within a few hundreds, so not a huge change there. So any questions about court revenues or the difference?
You mentioned twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, what, twenty-four to the year twenty-four?
So yeah, so the twenty, so I'm looking at the two thousand and twenty-three year, like January to December, and if I'm comparing it to two thousand and twenty-four, we had an increase in two thousand and twenty-four of eighty-four thousand four hundred and eighteen in revenue. That was the, those are the two years I was comparing.
So sixty-four to eighty-four?
I'm sorry. So our total revenue in two thousand and twenty-three was nine hundred and thirty-one thousand four hundred and fourteen, and then in two thousand and twenty-four, one million fifteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-two. So just the total revenue increased by eighty-four thousand. But not all of that increase goes to the city because we have to give some money to the state. And so the increase in the actual funds that went to the city in two thousand and twenty-four was about sixty-four thousand. Sorry if that was confusing. Any questions about court revenue? No? Or case filings? No? Okay. All right. One of my favorite parts of my job with the city of Albany is a special docket that we hold on the fourth Wednesday of every month, and it's our mental health court. It has been really an honor to be able to preside over that docket, and I just want to briefly highlight it and encourage you to visit if you can on the fourth Wednesday of the month. It happens at ten o'clock. So there are cases sometimes where we can identify that the defendant suffers from a mental illness, and sometimes that defendant is already receiving services through Lynn County Mental Health, or sometimes it's Benton County Mental Health, sometimes in Marion County. And depending on the type of crime, and so this would be someone who comes into court typically on a crime, and if we can identify either through their attorney or through the city attorney's office or sometimes through the police department that this person likely is suffering from a mental illness, and it's the type of crime where usually a non-person crime, sometimes they are person crimes, but with the blessing of the victim, we give them the opportunity to come into our mental health court docket. So instead of coming in with other defendants, they come in on a special time of the month, which is that fourth Wednesday of the month at ten, to our mental health court. And so it is a voluntary process, so we can't force them into it, but I talk to them about it and ask them if they would like to be a part of mental health court. And how mental health court works is we have them go to their mental health office for whatever county that they live in, so mainly, usually Lynn County, sometimes Benton, sometimes Marion, and have them enroll in services. And some of them, like I said, are already enrolled in services. And we have them sign a release with their department to give us not a lot of information, but enough information to know that they're on track with whatever it is they're supposed to be doing. So everyone's treatment program is a little bit different. Some people receive med management, some people go to counseling, some people have group sessions that they go to, some people, all three of those things. And what we do is we have them come back to court regularly, usually at the beginning of every month they come in, and their caseworkers will come in with them. We have representatives from Lynn County Mental Health that come in every month, and we just get an update to see how they're doing, if they're going to their treatment, if they're going to med management, if they've missed an appointment, how things are going. And we encourage them to make sure they're attending all these things, and sometimes people are doing really well, and then they'll have a few months where they're not doing well, and Lynn County Mental Health will tell us, just encourage them to do this, and we try and get them back on track. And the beauty of the program is eventually, and it's usually about a year into the program, we'll get notification from their providing team that they feel like they're ready to, what we call graduate from mental health court. And what that is, is it's kind of a little ceremony that we do. They get a certificate that they've graduated from mental health court, and their criminal cases get dismissed. And it really is touching in September, if she wants to talk about it, too, but I almost have to hold back tears when this is happening. We had a handful of people graduate last month in January, and I'm going to miss them. Like there are some where I just, I've watched them grow, I've watched them progress, I've watched them take control of their lives and feel really good about themselves. We had one, we had one guy, he called it Treat Yourself Wednesdays. And every Wednesday, he would go to his group therapy session and meet with his counselor, and that was him treating himself to like a better life and a more positive attitude. And just over the year that we were able to see him, I just watched him grow and really be so proud of himself and really like stabilize. And some of these people start with us where they're unhoused, they don't have a place to live. And by the end of mental health court, they're in a new living environment, they've been taking their medication that's helping them, and they feel like this amazing outlook on their lives. And it really is just such an amazing thing to watch and to see. And I wish every court had a mental health court, but it's been really, and it wasn't something that I created. It's something I got to step into when I became your municipal court judge, but I've just enjoyed it so much. And if there's a time that you want to come to court, that would be a really good one to watch. I even, and I hope it's okay with everyone, but I even put a little plug in for it with the Democrat Herald because I'm like, we're going to have some more graduations, and it's so cool. And I just, I want you to see these people just really achieve great things. And these are the types of people that we, this is the best means for them to do better in life. And it's not paying a fine or going to jail or having a criminal record. It's they have a mental illness that needs to be helped, and this is a really great way to help them. So I went on and on about that. I knew I would. I knew I would. So I'm sorry. If you have any questions about mental health court.
Please.
Yeah.
I think this sounds like a wonderful program. I do have a question about the requirement for check-in with the county mental health department. How does that work for veterans who are receiving VA care and may not be connected with the county mental health department, but instead connected with the VA?
Yeah, that's a really great question. So because we have a handful of people who will get VA services, or they'll be doing like private treatment, not through Lynn County Mental Health. So what Lynn County Mental Health does is even though they're not, maybe not receiving services through Lynn County Mental Health, Lynn County Mental Health will reach out to the provider that is giving services, and then Lynn County Mental Health just reports back to us that, yep, they're doing great with the VA, you know, just keep encouraging them. So yes, that does happen, but it does go through, Lynn County Mental Health does reach out to those agencies.
So it's a coordinated effort at that point?
Yeah, super coordinated. When you come to mental health court, you'll see like the courtroom is like two-thirds treatment providers and counselors that come, you know, with their individuals, and maybe like a third of our defendants. It's maybe more like fifty-fifty, but we have a great showing of, you know, even people who run the houses where they live, if they're in like an adult foster home situation, those people who run the homes will come, too, and just want to, you know, be a part of it. So, yeah, good question. Any other questions about mental health court?
I think it's a great program. When I was elected mayor the first time, Judge Reed, I sat in on a couple sessions, and there was this one young man that was going through, and he was graduating, and I saw him like five months later, and he was working at Shell Station. He said, you remember me? I'm like, I remember the tattoos.
Okay.
I said, how are you doing? So we talked for like fifteen minutes, and he's totally different than the first person when I first met him, you know, a year before.
Absolutely.
It was good to see that progress.
It's fantastic. It's.
I attended some of Judge Muggler's drug court graduations over there as well.
Yeah, yeah.
So both programs, I think, are fantastic.
Yeah, and I know Judge McHill has reached out to me about maybe doing something similar over in the circuit court, which would be great. Okay.
Well, we'd hear from September.
What?
You said September wanted to say something.
Oh, no.
She could, no, you covered it so well.
Okay.
I spent an extra ten minutes. Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's cool to see some of our, like, repeat offenders that we've seen over and over again for years. There's been a couple that have gone through the program, and their lives are totally different now. So that's really cool to see them get the help that they need.
Thank you so much for that. Counselor Newton Azar, do you have anything? Counselor Newton Azar, do you have anything?
No, I don't have anything extra. Sorry, it took me a second for the mute button to work.
No worries. Counselors, everybody good?
All right.
Thank you. Please continue.
So just briefly, I want to talk about Tara Williams. She is an employee at the police department, and I guess her actual title is the Victim Assistance Specialist. And what Tara's role is with the municipal court, and I know it's just the tip of the iceberg for other things she does at the police department, but she reaches out to victims of crimes. She keeps them informed, she gathers information, like restitution information, if there's, you know, been maybe a hit and run or something, and there needs to be some restitution paid or a criminal mischief. And she also connects people, so sometimes that will be the victim, sometimes the defendant, with different services. She comes to court on most of our court days, and she's there, she's kind of our liaison with the police department, giving us information. And she does such a fantastic job. I just wanted to highlight her. She is a great resource for us. She's fantastic for these victims who, you know, are probably scared and want someone that they can talk to and get updates about their case, and she just does a fantastic job. So we want to keep her around as long as we can, and we're just grateful for Tara Williams from the police department. And anyway, any questions about Tara? I could sing her praises for probably as long as mental, I talked about mental health court, but she is fantastic. And I have, don't look, September, but I have a whole section here on the municipal court staff. I just want to say how much I appreciate them. September is our court supervisor, and she is, and you know this, I know you do, like the top of her field. She is fantastic. She's like her own little IT person as well for a lot of things. She runs that court so efficiently, and what a great environment and a great team. Each one of the court staff is, they're intelligent, they're smart, they're resourceful, they're compassionate. You probably could guess that they deal very frequently with people who are upset and who are confused and need answers, and those people can be hard to deal with, and they do it so well, so respectfully and so clearly. And it can be hard, I think, you know, as the judge, people are more afraid to speak out against me because I can throw them in jail for contempt, and I will if they do that. But, so they leave it, they save it for the clerks, for emails or phone calls to the clerks, and they shouldn't do that, but they do, and our staff at the municipal court is next level. They're world-class, in my opinion. So thank you for their dedication. And I'm going to put in a plug in for Gina, who, Jaeger, who comes and checks in on us and cares about us, and we fall under her department, and we feel that, and we're grateful for her. Like she really comes and she checks on us and wants to make sure that we're running smoothly and that things are going well. And I can't, that's not always the case in municipalities, and it is here, and I really appreciate Gina's oversight and that she really cares about us. So thanks, Gina. I think that's everything that I really wanted to make sure I highlighted. I know you might have a lot of questions, so I just want to leave some time open for questions about the municipal court and things that we do there.
Counselors, any questions for the judge and staff? Montague?
So with the red light and speed cameras coming in, can you kind of highlight what you guys are doing to prepare for that incoming?
Great question. So we had our warning period, and that is over now. So now we're getting citations in from that first intersection. So they're one by one going live. So that first intersection, which was the existing intersection where we already had the red light camera, that is live now with speed and red light.
Queen and Waverly.
Queen and Geary. And the mayor's writing that down, like, Queen and Geary, right? Okay, yeah, okay. So Queen and Geary is where we've got the speed and the red light, and so we've been getting those citations. I'm not going to lie, when one software unit talks to another, it's tricky, and so there have been some glitches, but I think at this point, we've got them worked out. So there were some initial citations, and so our warning period lasted a little bit longer than anticipated because some of those initial citations, they didn't come over correctly initially. And so when they didn't come over correctly and their arraignment date came and went, I don't feel as the judge that I'm going to like hold them accountable at a later date for something that they would have come in on when they should have. And so those citations, I went ahead and dismissed because they didn't come over correctly initially, and so that was that. So the citations are coming over correctly now, Mayor, so, okay.
I won't be getting one.
I can tell you're looking at it. So I think we are good, like once in a while we'll have one that'll have some weird glitch for reasons we don't know. And like Sean Park, who works at APD, no, here, okay, and Pat Hurley.
Pat Hurley is kind of IT at APD.
IT at APD. They've been awesome at getting all these things worked out, so we're so grateful for them because that is way over my head. I don't understand how the software talks to each other. So as expected, a little bit glitchy to begin with, and so those people who got the very initial citations, those ended up getting dismissed because I didn't feel comfortable, it didn't make sense to me to go recite them or do anything with those. So so far, so good now, yeah.
So the process is the picture's taken or whatever's taken, and it goes to you, and then it goes out or does it go right to the person?
Yeah, so that's a good question. So the picture's taken, and then it goes into a queue, and then it goes to the police department. And so there is a uniformed officer who actually reviews each one of those events that happen, and it goes into a queue for them. And so they'll look and see, oh, you know, the camera misfired, or that was an ambulance that was going through, or whatever it was, and they'll make sure that the person who is in the picture is actually the person that, you know, they have their DMV record, that's the actual. they have their DMV record, that that's the actual person. So once the citation is reviewed by a police officer and is correct, then, then Vera Mobility, who's the company that we contract with, they send out to the defendant this packet. And the packet has the picture and it has a link to go watch the video because there's a video of everything too. And it, and it has the citation, so it gives them their court date and also instructions on how to handle their citation if they want to do it by mail. It does have to be mailed by statute. It has to be mailed out at least 30 days ahead of their court date. And so some of them, you know, just like any traffic citation, they get handled without coming to court. People will pay online or they'll enter a plea, I'm not guilty and request a trial in writing. So we, it doesn't come to us and then we send it out. So then what happens then with the software talking to each other is then Vera Mobility has a file that comes through the police department into the court software. And so that citation is populated into our system. And that's kind of where the, the issue is happening. So there were individuals, you know, a handful of them who got the citation from Vera Mobility. The police, you know, APD reviewed the citation, it went to them, they had a court date. But because it didn't come over into our system correctly, we didn't have it ready and filed by the time their, their actual arraignment date came up. Yeah.
I think it's great.
So you guys, as I think I recall, we added a staff member to your staff? Or was that for APD to review the?
We did add an FTE and we're working on filling that position.
And that's to help with the anticipated workload as we bring the other ones online? Because it sounds like that's kind of a lagging, you know?
Yeah.
Workload later, once they start building up.
Okay, yeah, the going paperless and the e-convictions were also in preparation of all of this, yeah.
Yep, excellent. Thank you.
The other counselors have anything? Counselor Thompson? Counselor Newton Azar?
So we don't have an exact timeline for when the other ones are coming online. Is that correct?
That's my understanding. So what I know is that the next location will be the North Albany Road and Thornton Lake Road. And I believe they're in the permitting process for that right now, is my understanding from the police department and making sure the signage is up. I, I do not believe that the cameras have been installed yet, but I believe the permits are very close to being complete, if not already complete.
This might be a question for Sean Kidd. I want to clarify, we aren't paying for any services currently for these red light traffic cameras that have failed to be online in a timely manner. Is that correct?
I think, I think the answer that is yes, that's correct. But I'm going to, I'll let September and Gina answer that because there was a point, like September and the judge were talking about, there was a glitch in the system. And I know at that point, we were withholding the payments to Vera Mobility, but I am not sure if we've gone active with payments or not. September's shaking her head no, so I'll let her answer.
Uh, we have not made any payments to Vera Mobility yet. We were still experiencing glitches through the end of January. So the beginning of February is when we really got things ironed out. So we have not paid them anything yet.
Okay, sounds good. And I, I just know that also the city of Salem uses this software and also is experiencing very similar issues. So, um, yeah, it was just disheartening to hear that things weren't working the way we wanted them to be when they were supposed to be. But thanks for the update.
Counselor McClellan? Counselor McGee? Smith? Well, thank you very much. Please continue.
All right, so, yeah. I, I don't have anything more unless you had any other questions of, of court issues?
I just, I would love to attend one of the mental health courts. Um, I, I'll put it on my calendar.
Okay.
But also want to thank you for the work you guys have done in the court and in support of this judge and the city. I think it's wonderful to having such a smooth operation within our city on limits. I'm hoping other courts will follow suit and kind of bring on that kind of professionalism and detail orientation and just continue your hard work and thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for your support.
I'm sorry, can you just repeat the days of the mental health court?
Yeah, it's the last, or it's the fourth Wednesday of every month and it is at 10:00 AM. And there are, once in a while, it falls on like a spring break where the attorneys aren't available. And I, so, so if you want to, if you're planning on coming, just give us a call and we'll just verify that, that we're live that day.
Thank you, restorative justice.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Come visit anytime.
I will. Next on tonight's agenda is cooperative purchase playground, purchase playground and turf for Deerfield Park, Director Kim LaDane, pages two through 25 in your packet.
All right. Good afternoon, mayor and council. Let me share my screen. Doesn't matter how many times you do it, as soon as you sit up here, you forget how to. Hot dog. Oh, there we go. All right, mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity to chat. I am here today to talk a little bit about Deerfield Playground. You've heard me up here quite a few times, so I'll try to make this one short and sweet. So we are here today as it is time for us to purchase playground equipment and surfacing for this beautiful baby. And in order to give our community members the best value, we are trying to, we are proposing to go through a purchasing cooperative through NPP. So in order to do that, we need to come to you all because we wouldn't necessarily be going through the traditional bidding process. So what you have included in your packet is our playground equipment for landscape structures, but it's sold through a relatively local provider, Ross Recreation. And so here are some of the playground equipment that will be on our playground. Accessible, um, just a whole lot of fun and things that look very different from other playgrounds that we've got right now. So in the packet, you'll see our quote for, for all of this beautiful equipment in there. And then the second part is our surfacing option. So we received a grant as we are putting together a fully accessible playground, which means that our folks who use mobility devices and just generally everybody needs to be able to access. So when you're talking about a fully accessible playground, you're talking about two types of surfacing. So it is artificial playground grass, which I have examples in case anybody wants to have the full tactile experience. Yeah, okay. And then, uh, so playground surfacing for grass or you have your pour and play structure, which is down at Montith Park. And so to give you a little breakdown between the two of them, and then I'll bring around the examples. So the forever lawn playground grass, if we move forward with it at Deerfield, it'd be the second playground. We currently have a bunch of it sitting in our yard out at park maintenance right now, waiting to go down at Lehigh, which is going to be our sensory playground. We just couldn't get it in before the weather made everything far too squishy. So, um, uh, and with that, it's ADA accessible, it's antimicrobial, it's cooler temperatures, which is really important with how things are continuing to heat up. In, in shade, this drops temperature a lot faster than other alternatives. We can do repair and maintenance in-house. When we buy it, you'll see in the, they sell it in big sheets. Our, our playground is not going to be a large rectangle. So any of that excess, we save in-house. So if somebody comes through and takes a chunk of it out, burns it or anything like that, because people are going to people, our staff are able to go in and patch internally and, and to be able to take care of that without having to bring anybody back in. Environmentally, it's composed of a couple elements, a pad, this is only one inch. Ours is going to be two inches thick because that's what's needed in order to have your shock absorption from the higher heights. It has, it's made from replac, the backing's made from recycled plastic bottles from Yellowstone. They use soybeans in it. It's polypropylene and polyethylene, expanded polyethylene. I got it written down here. Anyways, there are materials that are used in kids' toys, in kids' sleep mats. PFOS free on all of this. And then on the inside, instead of rubber fill, infill, those little black, if you ever go watch a high school football game, it's the stuff that's coming up. With playground gra, uh, grass, it's actually sand. That's court sand that has an antimicrobial surfacing on it. So if it becomes displaced and it washes, it's more natural. It's not rubber going into our wastewater or our streams. With this, it comes a 15-year warranty and it'll be about $177,000 at most. We included the installation in the quote just so that we had it. However, we've also, we're out for bid on the project right now. And we're asking our contractors to bid on it as well. And we'll be able to move forward with whatever is going to be the best value for our, our community. The pour and place rubber, also ADA accessible, great down there at Montith. One bad thing for it is it cannot be repaired in-house. That is very labor intensive, using mixing proprietary chemicals and everything. So for example, we had somebody at Montith decide to take a razor blade to some of the, um, the surfacing at some point. We have not been able to bring anybody out to replace it at this point because they have to come out and it has to be weather dependent and we are not over those temperatures. So that's an additional cost and just an additional lag time that is not necessarily as preferable. Comes with some super fun designs and colors that we could do. Environmentally, it is made of recycled tire on the bottom, which can potentially may have PFOS associated with it. But when you look, read everything, it essentially just says it's a very slight risk and to have your kids wash their hands and not, you know, put their hands in their mouth. But it is a very minor risk, but that is one that does separate it from, from the other alternative. It has a seven-year warranty with the funds that are quoted in there with a recommended recap of this top layer, which is made of more recycled stuff. Sorry, stuff being the very technical term. Recycled rubber and, um, uh, material every five years. And the cost for installation on this one, and it has to be installed by these folks, is $187,000, 938, 187,000. So, um, so what I'm here tonight is, um, I'll be back on Wednesday. So if you have any questions, now's a great time and I can pass these around. But on Wednesday, it'll come forward with the hopes that you will approve being able to enter into the cooperative contract for both the purchasing of the playground equipment. My recommendation is to go with the forever lawn, but if that is not the choice of council, we also have the pour and place information included in the packet for you to also consider.
Counselor, uh, Montague has a question or comment?
Yeah, um, so what I think I hear you saying is that the pour and place, that is going to be the price. There's no, probably no opportunity to reduce that. But for the, um, other surface, there is an opportunity for us to maybe get a lower price on installation for that, so that would bring that down. And it's also cheaper, correct?
Correct.
Just want to make sure I understood that. Thank you.
No problem.
The other counselors, Counselor Newton Azar, you have anything?
And I kind of emailed about this back and forth earlier. But, um, I want to make sure I understood, like for the second option, you said that kids just couldn't put their hands in their mouth, wash their hands that are used after touching materials. Is that correct what I heard?
Yep, so with the recycled rubber crumb, most regulatory agencies say that the off-gassing is minimal and not considered significant health risk with typical use of playground equipment. But some do recommend avoiding mouth contact and washing hands after use. So that's what I've been able to find, both through the manufacturer, as well as the distributor, and then information online.
Yeah, it's so hard to keep, keep an eye on kids all the time and make sure they aren't touching their own. So yeah, just, that's not cool, but I understand. So thanks for clarifying.
No problem.
Counselor McClellan?
Thank you, I have two questions. I, just for clarification, did I hear you say that the, the forever grass can be repaired in-house, but the other surface cannot?
Correct.
Okay. And, um, and that was because the, the other surface, um, one of the reasons is the other surface needs, um, correct temperatures. The forever grass, does that have any, any specific temperature requirements for repairs?
Nope, not for installation. What's holding us up at, at Lehigh right now is that you have to do leveling all around it in order to be able to lay the padding down and the gravel fill. And we have beautiful new concrete that just got poured for the project. And in order for us to infill, we'd have to roll over it. And in the current conditions, we don't want to crack anything that we just paid for. So, um, different circumstances, uh, but no, we would be able to go in and install without it being over, you know, colder temperatures is, is fine.
And what are the, um, the, the cleaning procedures for, for each type of surface?
Sure. So, um, typically we go out and we have landscape, not landscape, sorry, playground inspectors that we have on our staff. And they go around to make sure that we have adequate fall zones and that equipment isn't, um, you know, broken, harmed. We take things offline as needed. And so for grass like this, it's about two pounds per infill per square foot, I believe. So they'll go in on an annual or semi-annual basis and just kind of measure and then add the additional infill material and rake it. A lot of times you'll find at the bottom of slides or other areas that have a lot of, you know, the bottom of the seesaw, those get displaced a little bit more, so they'll infill on those areas. And that's pretty much maintenance on this end. For pour and play, you just try to keep it free of, um, uh, leaves because mold and mildew can cause potentially issues and just hope that people don't pick at it. So those are, we don't do any additional cleaning.
Thank you.
Counselor Smith, you have something?
Uh, thank you for giving us two options to consider. I, in my mind, the, the forever lawn is the clear winner for the installation cost, the repair on-site option. And I believe it fits in with the character of the park better. I'm looking forward to this. And thank you for getting the map fixed.
Oh, Del Rio.
It says Del Rio Court.
Yes, thank you. Well, you and I have both heard a lot of comments about that.
I, I am really looking forward to this. I'm ready to cut a ribbon.
We can't wait.
Counselor Thompson, you have anything? Counselor McGee?
It's time to Marilyn gives her park. I got mine, so it's.
Well, hopefully if everything, um, another good thing though, um, you know, we are closing bids on next Tuesday for the, for the park. And with us ordering the equipment, a lot of the lead times are 12 to 16 weeks. So we're ordering now so that that way it's here in time, so.
Summer months could be.
Oh, hopefully September, we'll be all out there having a good time, so.
Well, I, I really do appreciate the work that's been into this and I love the options we have. And I know the Counselor Newton Azar and other counselors are concerned about PFOS and so you answered that question. So thank you for that. I'm excited about this. I think this is a great path forward for us. And honestly, you had me at warranty, double, double the warranty, it's lower price and we can fix it ourselves. And so that saves time, downtime if we did have any. So thank you very much for your report.
Well, I'll be, I'll pass these around and I'll collect them at the end.
So are you looking for direction from us tonight or?
Well, I guess what I'm hearing is that, um, when the resolution passes on Wednesday, and you say we can go ahead and buy all this good stuff, I will go ahead and purchase forever lawn as opposed to the pour and play is what I'm kind of reading.
Option one.
Option one.
That's, that's my opinion, yeah.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is intergovernmental agreement with DCBS Building Codes Division. Jonathan Balkema, our building official, pages 26 and through 28 in your packet.
Greetings, mayor and council. Jonathan Balkema, building official for the city. I'm excited to get to talk to you today about a great opportunity that DCBS has come up with late last year that provides an additional tool for building divisions to provide services to our customers. So they've decided to develop something they're referring to as a building evaluation services. But basically what it is, is a big intergovernment agreement that allows us to ask for assistance from other jurisdictions, other jurisdictions to ask for assistance from us so we can help each other out to make sure that we can provide the services that you guys would like us to, to our citizens. Looking at the little one-pager that they have in your packet on page 27, it is a predetermined package. It's kind of one, uh, one of those take it or leave it type approaches. And that was their ideal situation. It doesn't preempt us from having a separate intergovernment agreement, say with Lynn County or those. But if we choose to operate only under this intergovernment agreement, it sets the terms, payment terms, amount, everything. For us, we generally have a third party or multiple third parties that we contract with to fill in for larger gaps. But where this can come in is basically when those third-party services, which also support the other jurisdictions, are unable to provide us services or in the rare times that we just have a staff that decided to be sick that day and I can reach out to, say, Lynn County, if they're part of that agreement and say, hey, can you help cover before I cancel those inspections? So it's a great service for us to be able to offer for other people too and them to be able to assist us. And looking at the price structure, it's very similar to what BCD does for other elements. And the one- And the one that we'd use primarily would be the item C for the dollar amounts, which is $85 an hour, which is in line with what our billable hours are to customers too. As we mentioned on the memo, there's no real impact to our actual budget as we've already put that amount of money set aside for contractual services and there is limited possibility of additional revenue if we decided to take on a project for somebody else if we had capacity and they needed services. So if.
Counsel, do we have any questions for Jonathan?
Questions?
Marilyn, Counselor Smith?
This expands the pool of people that we have to draw upon for expert help, correct?
Correct.
People who are not currently on staff, although our staff could help other jurisdictions under the agreement.
Correct.
As needed. It's, it's a great use of, of technical expertise.
Yes, it definitely is.
You know, every, every year I hear at Leggo or in cities house, some cities or the mayor's conference how staff is a big issue for them. And, you know, we have a sizable staff, but there's some cities with no building official and they have to contract a lot of this stuff out. So I think this is going to be great saving money for small cities, but also good for us when we need additional support. So thank you. Counselors?
Just a great resource, shared of resources. I'm really excited about that.
Counselor Newton Azar?
I have nothing right now.
Thank you. So are you going to bring this back to us Wednesday?
Yes, we'll be bringing it back Wednesday. Thank you.
Do that. Thank you. Number six on your agenda, 205 Madison Property Disposition Discussion, Anne Catlin and Director Matthew Rutgers, page 29 to 86 in your packet.
Good evening, Mayor and counselors. So tonight we're here to talk to you about 205 Madison Street or referred to as the Madison Property. It's, you can see a picture of the location on page 31 of your packet, but just generally this located just to the north of the Calipulio Brewing Property. There's a vacant piece of land there. That's the, the property that we're referring to. It's, it's surrounded primarily by a residential development that was done by the, well, known as Edgewater Villages, done by a developer several years ago. So the history on the Madison Street property was the city acquired it back in 2013 through a settlement in franchise agreement with the Burlington Northern San Francisco Railroad. It's about an acre in size. It is zoned WF or waterfront, which allows for a number of mixed uses, including commercial and residential. The, let's see, so we, we actually had come in January of 2022 and we had asked the council at that point if they were interested in considering the Madison Property as surplus. We had a, a good amount of input at that meeting and the council at that time determined that they didn't want to take action. We did in kind of preparation for the future, go out and seek an appraisal on that land, which has been completed. It was actually completed in November of 2022 and it, at that time it was valued at about 14, $415,000. So now we're here for just a discussion. This is just information only at this point tonight. We will be back on the 26th for some further discussion and decision if that's what the council desires to do. But with that discussion is really trying to determine what, there, there's basically two options here. The council can determine to, that, that they want to retain that property for some other future use that we don't know about right now. Or the council can determine to not retain the Madison Property, at which time we would declare it surplus and that would be done at the, the meeting on the 26th. The, the next steps, if it's determined that council wants to surplus the land, we did have a surplus property policy that was put in place back in December. If, if some of you, well, the newer councils will probably have at least read it. If not, I can provide some more information. I've tried to outline that under the disposal path section of your, your memo on page 30. But essentially what, what occurs with that surplus property policy in place is if, if council determines, declare it surplus, we would then go through this evaluation and determining if there is another priority use of the council for that land. Priority uses can be financial based, so just want the money from the sale. It could be based on a particular style of development that the council saw would, would fit that area well, or, or any other types of uses or, or desire, basically whatever the council desires there. Now, if, excuse me, if there is no kind of priority purpose desired based on the, the surplus, surplus property policy, sorry, that's a mouthful, it, it moves into what I describe as path B, which at that point, the council would then, based on the policy, we, we have a couple of options that we can follow there. We can issue a request for proposal inviting bids for needed housing on that property. We could invite interested parties in developing the property for uses of affordable housing to submit proposals to the Albany City Council. Or the, the council could choose to, to donate that property to an affordable housing developer. The, the thing that I, I will note here, as it's, it's a lot of information, happy to answer any questions, just a little bit of history on this. It, the property has seen a good amount of interest over the years. One of those interested parties, and I actually just talked to them today, was the Edgewater Village folks, the people that developed that area around there. They have expressed a continued interest in that property over the years and doing some type of development, whether it be residential with maybe a mix of commercial and retail, maybe some parking. But again, that, that would, that would come into play depending on the path the council would choose. And there is also, I think you guys should have had it on, in your packets or in the dais, a proposal or some information from an affordable housing developer, which I'll actually let Anne speak to directly.
Yeah, thank you. Anne Catlin, Community Development Department. So another interested party has been Dev Northwest. They have been looking for property in the city of Albany and it's very challenging to find available property or property that's zoned the right way and for sale. So they approached us and we get this from time to time and you vacant available property and we knew this wasn't surplus, but we said, there is this property here that eventually might be developed. So they went back to see whether they could make it pencil. It's a little bit small for them, but they, they did go back and, and look to see whether it worked. And one of the reasons why we're here tonight is because if you're interested in considering the property surplus and then getting bids on the property, there is a funding window with the state that is opening in March and it's from March until May or until funds are fully awarded. And Dev Northwest, if they, if you decide to declare the property surplus and put it up for sale and, and take proposals, we could figure out a timeline that might work for Dev Northwest to decide whether or not they want to submit a proposal. So they did submit some information and it looks like they have several different configurations and could build 15 to 18 ownership townhouses that would be available to households earning up to 80% of median income. So the funding that they would need to do this though, is the state lift program, which is described a little bit in that letter, local innovative, fast track housing. And they're really successful at getting those funds. Anyway, if the timing was, well, let's see if, if there's been any more interest or thoughts about the property and, you know, there will be another round next year. We don't want to put pressure on you, but it's like, well, maybe we'll, we'll come back and see if this is right now or in the future.
So, so with that, we're just kind of providing the information that we have to date as, as well as options for the council to consider. Again, tonight is just information only. We'll be back on the 26th. Happy to entertain any questions that you.
Well, we would only come back if there is direction from you. We, we could come back on the 26th. I think today we're just trying to get direction from you about that, whether you want to even declare the property surplus or think about it and what a timeline might be.
Correct. So it's, if, if, well, we're not forcing the council to make a decision tonight on surplus or not. If, if there was something the council was interested in, we would be back on the 26th with, it doesn't require a resolution, only requires a, a motion from the dais to declare it surplus. But we, we've got time in between now and then if there's questions, obviously not trying to put pressure on you tonight. But if there's, if the response from the council tonight is we're, we're not interested in, in, you know, disposing of the property, then we don't need to come back on the 26th, obviously, which I think is what Anne's point is. So it's really an opportunity for you guys to ask questions now, or if you're not ready to make any decisions tonight, that's perfectly fine. We'll be back on the 26th for further discussion and, and direction.
Counsel? Counselor Monague?
So we've had this property how long again?
So we acquired it back in 2013.
Okay. And since then, we haven't, it hasn't been identified as something, a, a space that we would use maybe for a park or any, it's not on anybody's like master plans.
No.
For future. We, we see it as potentially developable at some point. So some point, our long-term plan is to declare a surplus whenever that may be.
It, it hasn't had a planned use for it. To your point, Counselor Monague, it's, it's been property, again, that the city had acquired through a settlement and it's, it is essentially sat there. And we've, like I say, in 2022, there was some interest expressed in it. We had kind of presented to the council at that time and they said, well, we're, weren't really interested in, in going any direction on that one. So there's been some more time. We've had an appraisal and now it's kind of bringing that back as we've, we've started to see more interest in it again and, and bringing those options to council to see if there's a, some direction you'd like to give on it.
Counselors have anything? Counselor McLeod?
Thank you. I had a question and I'm sorry if this is information available, otherwise I could not find it in the packet. What, with the little, the little cutout on that corner, do you have information about who owns that property? If that, if that property owner has, possibly has interest in the rest of the lot?
So, so that property is actually, and Anne probably has more details than I do, but that, that little corner cut was actually part of that Edgewater development and I think there.
They're supposed to build units on that and they haven't. So this whole area is in the central Albany revitalization area. It's in the urban old plan, but this specific property that we're talking about, aside from that little corner, there was no specific plan in the central Albany plan for this property. There's been some discussion in the past about whether there was a plan or not, whether it should be parking or something else, but there really was no direction given in the plan or by council at the time when care was more active. But, yeah, that, it's, it's owned by the Edgewater Village people, which is why they are interested in the rest of the block, but they haven't built on, on that and it's possible that they've been waiting for this remaining rest of the block to be declared surplus so that they could then consider a development then. But I, I think it's part of their agreement. I just wasn't a part of any of the agreements that they need to build, I think, two units on that.
Mr. Question, answer?
Yes, thank you.
So, Counselor, Ms. Smith?
You said that there's been increased interest. We know the Diamonds are interested and we know that Dev Northwest is interested. Are there others that can be named?
You know, it, it, it's interesting, over the, the course of time that's elapsed since the, the original discussion we had back in 2022, we've, we've had, you know, I've certainly have taken phone calls about the property and I know we received at least one letter immediately after that council meeting of somebody saying that, that they would be interested in developing it. It's, it's hard to kind of guess as to how many proposals you, you would get on that property, but certainly there would be, it's a, it's a great piece of land in a great location. I would be surprised if you didn't receive multiple proposals if that's the direction the council wanted to go there. It's, we, we know of at least the two for, for sure within, within the last couple of months, but over time, there's been a lot of questions about it.
Have you had questions from Habitat, for example?
No. I did, a former director, I did talk to them about the property, but no, I haven't. I mean, in the past, the city has basically donated money to Habitat. It's been Parks Department property that has been declared surplus. I know that they are, they're always looking for more land, but I'm not sure what their current construction schedule is and they're branching out into also doing housing rehab. But yeah, we could expect different proposals and then, you know, if you were wanting to declare surplus, consider proposals. You could look at, you know, timeline, type of development and figure out what priorities you may have as a council to help you make a decision. I mean, I think adjacent business owners have been interested in the property for parking, but I mean, that, that may not be the current case. That was a while ago. So, yeah. We are looking into an issue about the, we would bring this back if, you know, before we issued an RFP, if there's interest even declaring it surplus, but there are some possible in lieu of fees that may affect some of the costs of developing the property so we could give you an estimate of, you know, what a market value might be if there are some additional expenses. I don't know, that was something we're trying to look into so we would, we need to do all of our research and include that and, and declare it so that people know what they're actually, you know, making a proposal on and what the cost might be to develop it.
I have a question. What was there before its current state?
So the, the, before this whole area was actually a fish factory many, many, many years ago.
So has environmental work been done on it yet?
The, you know, I, I can't speak to, you know, what, what are like a level one reporter, level two would, would say here. I know that when Edgewater Village came in, the site was, was part of a cleanup. I actually had looked at in the DEQ database, it doesn't, I didn't see any red flags on it, but again, that's part of that due diligence process that if it were to kind of go out on the for sale, that would need to be done.
And would that be borne by us, the cost of that, or would that be by the person that, that won the contract?
Typically it would be done by, well, depending on how the council wanted to do that, but usually when we look at for sale prop, properties or properties that you're offering up for sale or entertaining proposals, that would be part of, you know, their due diligence, their responsibility to do. And we'd have, you know, obviously with the help of Mr. Kidd, crafting language in, in our for sale documents that would absolve us of certain things.
Yeah, at first you would entertain proposals, but we would be looking at all of the data that we have and have that made available to any interested.
Parties.
Yeah, parties.
Counselor, Counselor Thompson?
Yes. I went back and watched the January 2022 discussion and so I'm, I'm glad today to hear February 26th is more of, on the kind of timeline, because I thought today, you know, way too soon. You know, at the dais is the development Northwest proposal, but also at the dais is a, is a letter from Russell Hawk who presented bef, he talked to the council during that 2022. He's a resident there. And so my first question, and it's not only to you guys, but my first question was the, were the issues raised by Mr. Hawk, now three years later, do they still exist? And, and here is his, his letter that basically says they do. And he goes into detail. You know, I just think we are unlike a typical property owner, we have obligations more than just a financial pro or con on filling in the numbers. I think we have to, and I'm, I'm very, so what I'm getting at is I'm very, I've just, you know, got this this weekend, took Leggo for today. I got to hear more from, from Mr. Hawk and his neighbors and, and really the businesses out there. I can't imagine today going down a path without at least talking to those folks in terms of, is parking still an issue? Mr. Hawk raises the idea of a small park in that area.
So the.
Yeah, so go ahead.
The picking of the, the 26th date was very much so on purpose. You're, you're absolutely correct. When, when this was discussed with council back in, in 2022, there was a fairly large contingency of folks that were, that they had some concerns as, as you've heard. So it's, you know, this is why we're information only tonight, giving this a little bit of opportunity for council to, to consider. Certainly you will likely hear more input and that's, that's all part of that bigger picture as you guys look to, to make a decision, if, if there's a decision to be made.
I mean, I think initially when we were here three years ago, we talked about would, do, would you want to consider the property for affordable housing or, or needed housing? And there are perceptions about what that is and who lives there. And so I think that's where a lot of those concerns came from. And then, you know, past discussions about. where a lot of those concerns came from. And then, you know, past discussions about, maybe about how could the property be used, but not any that the council have had to talk about the property, or is there funding to create a park, you know, for example? I know that, that came up. So if you decide to direct us to bring back a memo to declare it surplus soon, February or, or later, then we would do that. And, and the normal process is to put an ad in the paper, and then set a deadline for when proposals would be heard, and we could, they would just sort of present those at the council, similar to what they did with the property by the Main Street Roundabout. And then you could, could just, you know, work through those proposals. But, you know, some of the issues are that we don't have enough affordable housing, which is one of the reasons why we continue to have, I mean, there's different levels of people with, without homes, but, you know, housing is, is needed across the spectrum.
Okay, Counselor, Counselor Newton Azar, do you have anything since this is in Ward One?
I know that Counselor Thompson and I were talking about earlier, going and chatting with some of the businesses in the area, and maybe going to order and talk to some folks. So I know that there's things that we still want to do moving forward. So, hopefully I'm not under the weather here soon, and we'll be able to do those things. But no questions right now, just listening.
So are you needing direction tonight, or are you going to bring it back on the 26th?
The only direction we would need tonight, if the council were to say, absolutely not, we're not interested in disposing of the property, if there's still an interest in potentially doing that, then we'll be back on the 26th and ready. If, if the council were to want to declare it surplus and go over basically the options again, and receive direction from the council, and that direction may be, here's the option we'd like to pursue. That, that direction may be, we'd like a little bit more time before we make a final decision. So it's, it's really in the council's hands at this point.
You, you can declare the property surplus and not choose to do anything at this time. We just, if you have any direction for us, so that we can bring something back, or bring, or, or not.
So.
I, I'm, I'm for you bringing it back so that we can discuss it even further. It sounds like councilors in Ward One would like to do some more due diligence. I personally would like to, you know, review that meeting and make sure that I'm listening to the concerns. That will give time for neighbors to send us any of their concerns, if they have concerns as well. And, yeah, I think that we can discuss it in the future.
So we'll, we'll bring back-
As of surplus?
Yeah, memo for consideration, and you can decide whether to act and declare it surplus on the 26th, and we'll take it from there.
Can I ask the counselor from Ward One, will a community conversation at the Riverfront Community Center work for you guys? So you can get that-
Great idea. Great idea.
Yeah, that sounds fantastic.
So instead of having you guys go banging on doors in the cold, you can have, invite people out?
Yeah. Counselor Azar shouldn't be, like, committing me to volunteer work. I'm willing to talk to people. I'm willing to walk on doors, but-
So let's, let's-
February? I don't know.
Can we look at, can we look at doing something like that, have a community conversation maybe next week, or, you know, right before, before the next meeting?
That sounds great. I would love that. But, yeah, I know.
Was that okay? Is that okay?
Sorry for jumping in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can look at availability and get back to the Ward One councilors with some options for, for meeting.
Thank you.
One, one last thing, if I may. So we have the letter from, if you don't know, Mr. Hawk, and I don't know if he still does it, but he gained a little bit of notoriety as the guy who, he cleaned up trash. He cleaned up, I mean, that's understating it. He cleaned up significant amount of trash along that area. And so, you know, one person, you know, you can't just, you know, I'm certainly not going to make a decision based on one person, but people who, this is a thing with me, people who get off their computer and get out and do things carry a lot away with me. And so, I just want to add that, if you didn't know, that Mr. Hawk did that or does that in that area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next on tonight's agenda is business from the council. And since Counselor Newton is, I'm gonna go and go with you first.
I don't have anything except, you know, I'm just feeling under the weather, and I, I'm thankful to be able to come remotely, instead of affecting anyone else and, or missing the meeting. So grateful for this op, option.
Counselor Carolyn McLeod?
Yes, this, since the last meeting, we attended the League of Oregon City City Day at the Capitol. I, I attended that with fellow councilors, mayor and staff. We met with Senator Gilser Bluen and Representative Boss Hart Davis, where we championed the city's four legislative priorities. I also fielded questions from constituents regarding the anticipated arrival of the big green dinosaur at the gas station on Pacific Boulevard. I communicated with the Sinclair Oil Company and was told that after some manufacturing delays, they expect the Sinclair Dino will arrive in the next few months. And that's it. Thank you.
Counselor McGee?
Nothing tonight.
Counselor Smith? Counselor Smith?
Nothing tonight.
Counselor Montague?
Yeah, I did have one thing. I just wanted to recognize an empty chair in, in the room today. Shayla Escudero, our local reporter, who usually would cover the city council, has taken a job in Yawhatz, and I am so excited for her. I, you know, I very appreciate her coverage. I think that local press is so important, and so I'm excited to hear that they will continue coverage. And hopefully, we'll see somebody here in the, in the audience soon. But good luck, Shayla, on your new job, and thank you for all your coverage.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson?
I don't have anything myself, though. I am, because this is in Ward One, I am too eagerly awaiting the arrival of the big green dinosaur. And I have named it Calosaurus. I hope that catches on, because it would be on Kalabuya.
Where's it gonna be?
Shell State, or, well, the new Sinclair Station.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, 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 on Kalabuya.
Nice.
That's all I have.
So, tonight, I'm, I'm, my business from the council is the If I Were Mayor contest is going great. I spent four classroom times, classroom times at Memorial Middle School answering questions. One young man actually had read the strategic plan, 13-year-old. I'm like, okay, then. So I'm pretty excited about it. The teachers have been really great with me coming out. And one of the young men asked me if, would their city council come to have lunch with him? And so I'm going to be asking the city councilors of the wards to join me for lunch with their, with their constituents' children. The kids are really paying attention, and they've watched the contest, and some of them have overcome their fears, and that was great to have Bryn利, Bryn利 Boschburn in one of the classes, and she was selling it for me. And so it was really wonderful to have that kind of engagement with the kids. And the teachers, basically, they, they don't have to teach four classes. I'm up there talking to the children. But there's a lot of interest in what's going on in the city. They do appreciate that we get out, and I get out in town and meet with them and talk to them. So if you have a young person that's interested in it, please give them a flyer. Have them call Madam Me, or just call me, and we'll figure it out. But the, the young people in this community really want to be a part of the program. I'm pretty excited about it. So that's all I have. I'll turn it over to the city manager for his report.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And I'll ask Kayla to come up to the desk to give you some information. You'll recall that at the last meeting, Counselor McLeod had asked about two programs, a business, a small business assistance grant program, potentially using economic development funds, and then also support for the Arts Committee and recurring arts program. Also, since that time, we've dealt substantially with this freeze in federal funding. So we wanted to give you an update on that, and that's what Kayla will start with, and then she'll move into the other two items.
Thank you, counsel. So I'm going to try to give you an abbreviated version of the federal funding update to start with. If you've been following that, you'll know it's been whiplash the last two and a half weeks. We get word that there's the freeze. We then have the court posit, and then we've had a back and forth since then of the court issuing down a number of rulings, the administration coming back and saying those don't apply to us, most recent happening today, where the US District Court in Rhode Island said, you're still freezing funds, you need to make those available immediately, and they've already appealed that decision. But if you saw the Friday email from two weeks ago, right now, the city has 5.6 million in what are called active awards. So those are things that we are under contract for currently, 3.5 million of which is, is ongoing funding. So those are programs like transit, where we have people who are on the ground. Those are funding position-type activities. We also have another 4.6 million in awards that were not yet under contract. Those are the awards that we are most worried about, because there was no contract in place prior to the freeze happening. So things like the four charging stations that came before you a couple of weeks ago. And we also have some congressionally-directed spending there in regards to expansion of the compost program, as well as the Cox Creek Interceptor. So, some good news coming out of this. We do have some grants that we have been able to secure. So the state of Oregon has come in and said, for a number of the programs that they are passed through for, meaning federal funding goes to the state, the state then awards it to the city, that they are acting as guarantor on some of those awards. So we had a number of cybersecurity grants that we were worried about. The state is going to make sure those are fulfilled. Also, some grants in relation to our fire personnel, and some historic preservation grants. So that is good news for us. We, as a city, have also had to have this conversation. We had entered into and acted as a pass-through entity for a number of CDBG awards, that fund programs throughout our community. So for the 2024 awards, we did have to have the conversation about can the city float that if we need to. It's about 400,000. And looking at where we're sitting in reserves, that is something that we are comfortable saying the city can maintain the 2024 CDBG awards. So those are the programs that were already awarded, that those, those groups have already spent the money on. Looking ahead, though, there are some pretty large conversations we're going to have to have as part of the budget process this year. You are still looking at CDBG for 2025 as uncertain. While we are going to work through the award piece of that process, because we need that in order to apply for any additional funds in the future, we are making sure that we include language in there that does give, you know, us an out if that funding does not come through, and also makes it very clear to those organizations if they're awarded, you know, that this is, this is a, a funding source that right now is, is unstable. Additionally, we do have to have, we have to have a conversation about transit, potentially. So transit is one of our largest programs that is funded through federal dollars. It's almost entirely funded through federal dollars. We have 22 staff members that are on that program, as well as a number of users throughout the community who are need-based users, right? They don't have a car. This is their only opportunity for transportation. So right now, in the transit fund, we do believe that we can cover through the end of the fiscal year for the transit fund, and we are looking at some options with reserves to buy us a little bit more time past that end of the fiscal year. The reason for that is that right now, the estimates coming down from GFOA, a number of the organizations that are watching this, is it's probably going to be a six-to-eight-month protracted legal battle. And we don't want to immediately stop programs if ultimately those obligations do come through and, and are met. Right now, we have staff that's working diligently to make sure we can get as much of that programming under contract, and also submit for reimbursement as quickly as possible. So typically, you would apply for reimbursement for these programs on a quarterly basis. At the moment, we're doing that on a monthly basis in order to try and get as much of that funding through the door while our portals remain open. It's been pretty hit and miss in terms of some of our portals going down and not being able to access our information. So, other big one that we have to think about, Albany Municipal Airport, and we do have two large capital projects that are coming to a close there. That is money that we have spent. And so we, if that funding doesn't come through, would be on the hook for paying those contractors out in regards to that funding. It's about half a million there as well. So ultimately, what are we looking at as we go into this next budget process? So it's going to be some difficult discussions there, particularly if we are not certain about where the funding is going to be coming from. The next big milestone that we're looking at is in March, when the federal government does their budget. That will help us understand where some of the spending priorities are going to be, and whether or not some of these programs are even going to have a chance at being funded in the future. So we're preparing for that, looking at some of those contingency plans. It also highlights a, it's a good and a bad. We've done a really great job as a community of getting grants. If you were doing the math there, that was over $10 million of awards that we could have had in our, in our coffers right now. But it does highlight an issue of, when you're so reliant on outside funding sources like this, it does put you in a position of risk. So as we're going through that and talking through, you know, what programs do we prioritize, it also means that we probably have to have a little bit of a revenue conversation in relation to that, and how do we stably and sustainably fund where our key programs are, and where does it make sense moving forward to actually apply grants? So, just a little bit of a preview over the next couple of months of what we're looking at. It's an evolving situation. It's changing on a daily basis. But with that, I wanted to turn it over in case you had any questions about that, before I move into the items from the last meeting. A lot. Okay. So moving to the two items, just wanted to give an update on the two motions that came from council. So those are two items that we are still working through. But I did want to first talk about the motion for additional funding for arts programming. So I was able to meet with both Sophie and Kim to talk through some options for the art program there. And right now, what we are looking at is going down a pathway of reworking the Collaborative Tourism Promotion Grant. So this is actually a grant that we were planning on relooking at this year, as is. There's some process pieces that needed to be updated for that. And as part of that discussion, we realized that for this grant, they thought the, that the Arts Commission could apply for this. The Arts Commission thought, hey, we aren't eligible to apply for this. So we're working through right now the language that is incorporated in that grant notice, to really clean that up and make it clear that art that is supporting, bringing people into the community can be an option under that program. The great thing about that is, it allows for the Arts Commission to apply for a particular project. So if it's more than $10,000, if it's a $12,000 project, $13,000 project, they can apply for that funding, rather than having that, that one piece. It's also a more sustainable funding source for us to look at. So what you can expect over the next couple of months on that is, really looking, staff is going to be looking at what those requirements could look like, going to the Tourism Advisory Board to talk through what those requirements look like, and then ultimately coming back here to council, because it will require council direction for that. It's all going to happen pretty quickly over the next couple of months, because we do need to get that in place prior to the next award round, which is expected to go live in the early summer. So more to come on that, but that is what we're working on right now. As far as the motion for an economic development grant, staff is working through right now to get some clarity in terms of what that could look like. Some of the key pieces that we, we need to look at here is, what is the aim of the program? What do we want to do overall? What is the problem we're trying to solve, or the gap? Because we will need to build requirements around that. The other piece is, so we're looking at that 2.1 million dollars in, in economic development funds that were, were talked about at the last meeting. That is a singular pot of money. And as we go into the budget process, especially in light of the federal conversation and funding, that's a, a piece that we're going to really have to look at. What does council want to prioritize out of that? So more to come on that. That's a pretty lengthy one, since that is actually starting a grant program from scratch. But right now, we're looking at what the trade-offs would be, what are some of the questions that need to be answered in order to make that happen. So just wanted to give you guys an update, because I know we've gotten several questions already. I wish we could get something done in a two-week period, but this is going to take a little bit of time on some of those. So, any questions on that?
Thank you.
I, I do have more, more of a comment. I just want to reiterate that I believe the spirit of the motion was to move that money into a, we, we suggested a program that didn't have, it didn't have, doesn't have to be that way. But, and you're already starting us, that's good. That, that is the spirit of the program, is to, you know, because I don't want to, what I don't want is, February turns into March, March turns into April, and before you know it, we have prepared a full, complete City of Albany budget. And it's kind of too late to make any adjustments. I've been on Budget Committee for many years, at both the city and the school district, and, and once it's prepared, the idea you can make significant changes goes out the window, which is actually ironically, now you're talking about, maybe we have to make significant changes, because the federal government, which will be the first time I ever saw late. But my point being is, is I want to see movement towards that, so it doesn't get to, at the late hour in the spring. That's all. Thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you. Thank you, counselor. Yes, the spirit of that motion was to get something in the draft budget. It's a draft. It's, it's not, it's not final. It's, things can be moved around. I, I did just want to get something in there to be able to talk about it, and, and to hopefully, hopefully get those things taken care of at some- hopefully get those things taken care of at some point with the understanding that it's a draft, it's not the final. The things are going to change and I understand that. So thank you for allowing us to to have this conversation.
Yeah, and just to clarify, so the intent right now with the recommended budget is to really bring forth a couple of things. Or because we do have this large piece happening with the federal funding being so uncertain, is what you're likely going to see is a recommended budget that looks at what it takes for us to keep on keeping on, where are some of the areas that we would have to close some of those gaps? And then also some of the options for what is it that what is it what does it cost us as a city in 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 order to bring in some of the other programs that we're talking about here? So just a little bit of a preview of what that's that's going to look like this year.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Kayla. With that, I will all likely see you all on Wednesday night at six P.M. here in Chambers for our city council meeting and I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you. Well, do you have anything else, Peter?
No, I have nothing.
Thank you.